Director here at Partnership for the Public Good. We, I see folks in the room that have come to many of our events over the years, participate in our agenda process, and I see some of you that maybe I haven't met in the years of being director here, so it's wonderful to see you all. In front of you, you have both the publication that we are kind of launching and going through today on Buffalo Common Council procedures, but you also have in front of you a little snapshot of our community agenda process. Some of you will know that every year, our network, which is now up to 340 signed partners, are all invited to bring to us the policy change that they would want to see at the city, county, or state level in the year ahead. And then we have this process of pitching, discussing, and ultimately, our partners vote and create our community agenda of the top 10. So that process is just getting underway for this year. If you are a PPG partner and you want to learn more, I've got some fuller packets here from an overview workshop we did on that. You can catch me or another staff member after. If you've missed the call for planks, the announcement about it all this year, and we'll get you all caught up if you want to participate. We're very glad to have with us today to run through City of Buffalo Common Council procedures. First of all, our Director of Community Research, Sarah Wooton, who is a co-author of this publication. You'll see lots of folks contributed. It was a few years in the making to discover all these little pieces about common council procedures that we ourselves had wondered about for many years. Over the years when we had those questions, we would turn to these two with many of those questions. So we have Sean Mulligan, who is Deputy Chief of Staff at the Erie County Legislature, but previously was a long time common council staffer. How many years?
We'll just go with too long.
Too long. And worked in the office of Councilmember David Rivera for a long time and was just a great resource in that role to many of our partners and our issues. And then Rebecca, Rebecca Castaneda, who has worked at city, state, and federal elected official offices as a Western New York staff member, and we've worked with over the years as well. So thank you so much for joining us. And we'll turn it right over to Sarah to jump in. We'll pause for questions with our wonderful panelists here, and then we can have questions from you all. We'll have plenty of time for questions and discussion at the end as well.
Yes, thank you all so much for coming. As Andrea said, this has been years in the making for us, so it's really exciting for me to be able to share it with you all. And I hope you find it to be useful. Also, yes, a big thank you to the former staff and interns who have helped with this, as well as some current council staff members, Jim Montour, and former council staff members, Malcolm Urther, who also helps confirm a lot of this information throughout. And just a disclaimer that I am not an expert on this at all. I've just spent a few years trying to figure it out and piece it together, but that's why we have you two here too. So feel free to jump in, correct anything, or add anything that you think might be useful to folks. So to start off, if you want to... Yeah, so these are some of the things that we'll be covering. Kind of an overview of the types of council meetings that happen, what exactly happens during them, how you can go about filing an item, speaking on an item with the council, why you might want to do that, what would happen with your item after the fact, what the difference is between various items and who gets to use them, as well as how the council can actually change the law in the City of Buffalo. Perfect. So the first type of meeting we have here is caucus meeting. So that is the meeting of the Democratic Caucus, which since all of our council members currently are Democrats, to my knowledge, they all go to those meetings. Is that...? Yes. That happens every other Monday at 2:00 PM. And basically, what's happening there is they're running through the agenda for the upcoming regular meeting, and they're figuring out which committees each item is going to and figuring out how they're going to vote on other items. Sometimes, city employees from other departments will come and speak briefly about their items, just to give them an overview. But yeah, the council members are coming up with a game plan for the regular meeting. And you can watch this via Facebook Live. It's been really helpful to us that the council staff, ever since COVID, have been live streaming all of the meetings. And so you don't necessarily have to go in to witness this. You can see it on the Common Council's Facebook page. The regular meeting happens the following day on Tuesday at 2:00 PM. It's not a very distinctive name, so I apologize if this gets confusing. But this is where all nine council members attend. And they're basically doing a similar thing as in the caucus meeting, but they're officially sending new items to various committees. And they're also, you know, maybe having somewhat short discussions on what they're planning, what they're going to vote on and voting on them moving certain things forward that have already been in the process. I would say, in my experience watching some of these meetings, there's not a whole lot of discussion in the regular meetings. So if you're hoping to get a sense of what's going on with the council, it's not easy to necessarily get it from the regular meeting. It moves very quickly. They probably have 100-plus items every two weeks. And so it's really just, you know, listing out the items, sending it to a committee, moving on. So the best bet for kind of understanding what is going on... Oh, sorry, one more thing to add about the regular meetings. The public is not generally allowed to speak at that. So if you want to speak to the council at a meeting, it's going to be at a committee meeting. So those happen on the off weeks. So if you don't have a caucus and a regular meeting one week, then you're having committee meetings. And those happen throughout the day on Tuesday. And this is where the council members really get into discussions and hear from the public about the items that have been sent to that committee. And it's generally only going to be the members of that committee who are there, so probably three to five committee members. And there are four main committees that happen every two weeks. Among the, well, yeah, civil service, finance, legislation, and community development. There are additional committees that happen, but those happen less frequently. But if you really want to hear about kind of what's going on with the council, it's good to pay attention to those committees. And I'll also add that we, as PPG, have council summaries that we put up every week. So you can check out the news section of our website, and you can get an overview of what's been happening in any of these meetings. Yeah, this is just an overview of some of the committees that exist. You don't really need to know all this information. There's more about it on our website and on the council's website, but just so you can see. Maybe the next one? Yeah, this is just a visual depiction of how the kind of staggering works. So you have the caucus meeting, the regular meeting, following week the committee meeting, and then it starts all over again.
Let's see, the next section. If I could add something, I would just add too, you just mentioned like it starts all over again. But oftentimes, if something is moved to a committee meeting at the first regular meeting, it might be voted on, you know, as a final vote back to the regular meeting, like in the very next one, almost like completing the cycle, or it may take longer to get back on a regular meeting agenda. There may be like other meetings or questions that need to happen before they want to get a vote on. But like just because it's done during committee, like it's not actually complete, I guess. I just wanted to add.
Yeah, definitely. And we'll get into a little bit more of that. But Rebecca, if you want, yeah, sorry, if you go back one second. Or yes, this one.
Yeah.
So there's kind of a third line here. You go back to the regular meeting. An item could be introduced in this regular meeting. Go to the committee meeting. Go back to the regular meeting to be voted on. Is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Can the public just come to the committee meetings?
You can go, you can attend. Yeah. Yes, they are. Yeah, all of the caucus, regular committee.
Everything is now.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. All right. So I've mentioned probably the concept of an item. An item is basically anything that you send to council staff or anything that the council members send to council staff that they want to put on an agenda. So a lot of times for us, it's letters, you know, asking the council to do something or explaining an issue that we're concerned about to the council. But usually, we're not mailing them. We just email, you know, our little letter, and that goes to the council staff. It's then considered an item once it's on the agenda. But if you were, you know, looking to start a business and you needed a permit, you would go through that application process. That would be an item. Or the council members use resolutions, ordinances, and we'll talk about those, but those would also be items.
Can I comment on much more?
Yes.
So there's a story about something that needed to be discussed, and it was like in the middle of a meeting. And a council member literally wrote on the back of a napkin. And it was now with an item before that, up for official discussion. So to much more, as long, really, the rule is as long as it's written down, it can then be a part of the agenda of that meeting.
Interesting.
My question is, were a part of like a postcard writing campaign, would that become an item when they receive those postcards?
I believe so. You could put them in a document.
Yeah, they probably would like condense it into one item.
Yeah.
But yes.
Scan them in or something. And what you were saying of in the moment, writing something on the back of a napkin, that's probably something only a council member can do, right?
Just an example.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, but it's good to know, yeah.
Not necessarily, public can run in right away.
Yeah. The next piece, this is just an example of an item that we might send. The content, you know, usually we try to keep it somewhat short because we don't expect the council members to read it before the meeting. They have, like I said, probably over 100 items every two weeks. And so it's really just to get on the agenda for us. But it can be helpful as a reference document, so it's nice to include some details. But the key piece here is just about asking to speak in a committee on your item because you want the council staff to know that you want to speak. If you don't say that, you know, the council staff, I'm sure, receives many, many letters and different things, and they're probably going to just, the council may just receive and file your item, meaning that they just take it into the public record and move on. And they might not anticipate that you're going to speak unless you mention it.
And that's what I was thinking with your postcard campaign question. I think making sure that they either go with a cover letter or on each postcard, it says, you know, "Our group wants to speak to this in a council committee meeting."
Yes. How to file, I mentioned that you can email it to that email. You can also mail it to City Hall, the floor of the council staff. I didn't put it in here, but it's in that fact sheet if you want to do it that way. The deadline to file an item, this will be a bit more clear in the next slide, but is 2:00 PM Thursday before the next regular meeting. So if you go to the, yes, perfect. So if you want to speak at this Tuesday, the 16th committee meeting, you're going to have to submit your item all the way back here before the 4th at 2:00 PM. Because what happens is you submit it during this period sometime, it's going to be sent to the regular meeting. As we talked about, you can't speak at the regular meeting. They're just deciding what committee it goes to. So then they'll send it to a committee, and you would speak at this meeting here. So it's a bit, you kind of got to think ahead of when you're sending it in. Because if you send it in on this Friday, you're not going to get to speak on it until two more weeks after this. So it can feel like, wow, it's taking a long time. But if you know what the deadline is and when you would then be on the agenda, it's a little helpful.
I would also add that there's such thing as late filing, but it has to be approved by the majority leader, not CP, majority leader. So technically, someone could try to late file something, but if it's not approved by the majority leader, it might just get bumped anyway. So it's just always safer to get it in by that hard deadline.
So, yeah, I think this is really important because over the years, I think a lot of our partners have sent something in on the Friday or the Monday right before a regular meeting. And then you go to the regular meeting, and they don't raise your item. And it's super disappointing and upsetting. Why didn't they raise it? Why is it not being sent? And it's all about that deadline. So, yeah, this is, I think, is a really important piece of it.
And just to add to that, if you do file your item here, you don't necessarily need to go to the regular meeting because, again, you're not going to be able to speak there. You really just want to find out what committee it's being sent to, and we'll talk about how to do that in a minute.
Yes, so we wanted to pause here for this first section. It's really just been an overview of what are the meetings? What are the committees? What is this schedule? And turn to Sean and Rebecca, who've been adding things for anything else you want to add. What if a resident needs an accessibility accommodation or language access? You both perhaps had left. I can't, not you, Rebecca, but last fall, the council did adopt an accessibility and language access policy. And so there's a request form, which we can pull up on the website. And you can fill that out and request an accommodation or an interpreter for a direct meeting with a council member or to speak in a committee meeting. So that's available. I'm not sure how many of our partners have tried to use that yet. I believe we'll be looking in to see how's that going for some of our immigrant and refugee partners as well.
I forgot to pull it up, so we don't have it easily accessible.
Anything else on that policy?
I would just say probably, it's hard without being in City Hall right now, but the language access one is, I would say, just more complicated to accommodate. Last time I was there, it's not like there was a contract between the council and any one agency to provide interpreter services. So that may have changed by now with the new ONA director. But all that to say, it just probably takes a little longer. So knowing well enough in advance, you know, the more time, the better, to make sure that they can accommodate it.
And then we were wondering, what if a resident needs help putting an item together? I mean, you've said it can be anything in writing. When you were council staff, would constituent residents come in? Would you sometimes help them jot something down to submit? What if someone really needs help starting from scratch on this?
Yeah, I, you know, I would start either with, you know, the resources provided here in council staff, you know, or your district council members, their district staff. So that's, this is all a lot of flashbacks, mostly good. About that, where it wasn't so much, I want to, you know, help put an item together, but just being confronted with an issue and how can you help me solve this? So there's a lot of shaping things into being an item that would be, you know, a fruitful discussion before the council. Because even the point about, "I would like to speak", you know, depending upon who's making the decisions, in the absence of that direct request, they may just say, "Oh, well, thanks. We don't, I don't see how this is a common council issue, so thanks for informing us of that, and we'll just receive and file an item." Receive and file, it's basically goodbye. Thank you for sending us your information. So it's much harder when this is, you know, this is a public document. It will be on the record. And the item, the person specifically asked to speak on that makes it that much harder for your item to have to go away. So I would say, in terms of constructing it, you know, this is a great example. I always had a one-page rule, like keep it, try to keep it to one page because it's not like you need to get every single important detail of information, but just enough that you're conveying the issue. You know, in this case, you know, there's a huge issue of lack of affordability. And here's one tool of, you know, a new partial tax exemption that could help. So you know, you're condensing the big, major issue of affordable housing into one tool. And that's something that is directly related to what the council acts on. So that's a great, I would follow this example. I would also add to the, if you can go back to the calendar, one about the file your, the one that says file your... So I would add on Wednesday, so on Tuesday, check to see where your item went.
That's the next section.
So there'll be something to do on Wednesday, too, making sure they know that you're coming.
Yes, definitely.
I would add, if everybody has their own ethos, I guess, about this. For me, it's really important to hear in their own words what a resident or a constituent needs help with. So I hesitate to put an item together for a member or for, not for a member, for a constituent. If it's like a physical access thing, like they're struggling with writing, or maybe, you know, they're, you know, can't hold a pen or something like that, that's, you know, transcribing is one thing. But I really need to hear it in their own words in order to be able to really help them navigate, like, what exactly is the next step? So just probably differs by office.
All right. So the next section is exactly what Sean had mentioned, figuring out where your item is going. So after the regular meeting, after you've filed your item before Thursday at 2:00 PM, after the regular meeting, where they've determined which committee it's going to, you need to figure out which committee it's going to. So you can do this by checking out the website. The link is here, but if we could do Escape, maybe, it will help us. Yes, okay. This is the meeting portal. It can be a little bit overwhelming at first. But these are all of the upcoming meetings. You can see the ones that are coming up really soon have an agenda with just the item names and then the journal, which is the item names with all of the attached documents. So if we go down, we can see our past meetings. This week was a committee meeting week. So we need to find the last regular meeting. If we just had sent in our item, let's see, see more. Scroll down to, let's see, September. So you can see here, here's our regular meeting, our last regular meeting. We have the agenda, the journal. And since it's already happened, we now have the summary, the proceedings, and the video. And so the summary is probably the most useful thing to look at here because it's just a short description of where every item went. So if you scroll down, you can see these are, each one of these is an item and what happened to it. So a lot of these are ones that look like they came directly. Somebody from the city filed them. But if it was your item, it would probably have your name in the title. So that's an easy thing to search for, to find it. And then you can see for this item, it was referred to CD, which means community development. And other ones, see, referred to finance. And it will also show you when that next meeting is coming up and when you would be speaking at the committee meeting.
If I could...
Yeah.
So actually, all of the items from the public will be under miscellaneous.
See if you can get there.
So these are titles of city departments that have submitted items.
The order, yeah, goes by different departments. And then, so then anything that's from the public will be under miscellaneous here. And as you can see, it's a number of, whether it's a formal body, like a task force committee, or it says, you know, L. Edwards Concerns Housing Code Violations. So that's where you're going to find your item if you submit it.
And Sean, if it was received and filed, it would say so right there, too?
It would, yeah.
If we head back here. Another way to find out is that you could watch the regular meeting. But again, there's so many items, it would just be a long process to figure out where your meeting is in there. So probably finding it on the website is your best bet. Or you can also email council staff and just ask them which committee it was sent to. And here again, this was an item that Andrea had submitted a few weeks back. And you can see, this was pulled from that same summary document that it was referred to community development and when that next meeting was. So they knew when to go speak.
Ctrl+F is your friend.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, the next step is reminding the council staff that you want to speak. So even though you put it in your item, that's great, and probably they took note of it. But it's still good to go back and just make sure they know that you want to come and speak on that day. So make sure you email them the Friday before the committee meeting is happening, just so they have enough time, especially because it seems like the first couple of days of the week are very busy and might get lost. So make sure you get it done before that. And also, if you have additional folks from, you know, your group that you would like to speak, mention their name and let them know that they want to speak because it's good to have a sense of how many people are coming. Next, yes. So there are two options as far as how you can speak. We would, I mean, I would probably recommend going in person. I don't know what you all think. I feel like it's easier to connect if somebody is in person.
It is, yeah. But it's not easy to get to City Hall. I mean, even parking is not great. If you're handicapped at all or have an accessibility tag, like, good luck finding parking. So it is easier to connect, and I would recommend that as well, but it's not always possible, so.
So Zoom is an option. If you would like to speak via Zoom, in that reminder email that you want to speak, also ask them for the Zoom link and let them know that you want to speak via Zoom. They would just send you the link so you would kind of be a part of the meeting the whole time, and then they would call you whenever the time is. If you're there in person, you would see, you know, the person at the front of the big desk is the chair of the committee. And when they get to your item, they'd probably call out, you know, "Is there anyone to speak on this item?" You would just walk down to the first row here where the microphones are and speak to the chair of the committee. Sometimes they'll impose a time limit because they do try to keep the meetings on time. And if they do, it would probably be three minutes. So it's good to have a general sense of how long your comments will be. A lot of times, they don't necessarily do that either, but you also don't want to speak for, you know, 10 minutes and have the chair be really upset with you and cutting you off. So good to keep it somewhat brief. And after you speak, you know, they may, they may discuss it a little bit. They may say, oh, they may give their public stance on the issue. Or they may ask you a question, or they may say nothing at all. I've definitely seen times where they just kind of move right along. And do you all have a sense of, you know, why that is? I mean, I guess sometimes I just don't have an opinion on something and...
Yeah, I think it's, it's whatever, you know, if the issue doesn't seem like it's a direct, like, council action, they could have that non-response of, like, this is an administrative issue, meaning, you know, the executive branch, the mayor's department needs to come up with a solution to this.
I would add, if they know that something else still needs to happen before a decision can be made, they might hesitate to weigh in heavily. Like, if they know that a block club meeting still is coming up, they might sort of take a breath and wait until that meeting has happened and then use both things to weigh in.
One thing, too, to know about speaking in these meetings is that sometimes the meetings do go long. They're generally scheduled for an hour, I think. But sometimes, in our experience, we usually plan like probably two hours max just to make sure that we're there to speak when the time comes. If you look at the agenda beforehand, you can see where your item is on the agenda. If it's near the end, obviously, it'll probably take a bit longer. But sometimes, things are taken out of order, and you never quite know how it's going to go. So obviously, that's really hard for people to spare two hours in the middle of the day to go if they're working during the day. But just something to consider because you don't want to do all this work to plan to speak and then have to leave before your item actually comes up during the meeting. And I know you can ask, you know, the chair, whomever, to move your item up, but I don't know if there are certain circumstances that help that to happen more often or...
I don't have an answer to that. I don't know.
It kind of has to do with how things are going that day. So, you know, if you have, it could go either way. If you have like 20 people there to speak and they're, you know, for example, community development committee is probably where a majority of public items go. But they also, if you're talking about a policy issue, maybe for the legislation committee, which also has like all of the permits that the council needs to vote on. So you may have like 15 people there each to get, whether like a special use permit for their business or they need council to vote on, like, how tall their, like, how tall their fence can be. So they would try to like get through those things that are, need their action, but are, there's no real debate about. But if, you know, if there may be, you know, a number of topics and you've got 20 people there and, you know, that's, I think, making that request is not something that's a formal process. But certainly, if you're building relationships with the council staff who are coordinating all these things and delivering messages between, you know, I would say that's part of that process of, as you're emailing them, saying, "I want to speak", and like being upfront about, "We're going to have this many people, and, you know, five people need to leave by 2:00. So is there any way we could be at the top of the agenda? And we're going to limit our comments to three minutes each, and there's only, you know, 10 of us." I think that those types of things certainly help.
Or just thinking through the accessibility portion. Like, if we know someone's coming in in a wheelchair, and they might need that extra time to get from the 12th floor down to the 11th, there's like another floor where you get on a special elevator and then get down to the floor. It just takes a little while, so that might be a factor, too. And I would also add, like, obviously, there's groups that sometimes coordinate, and like, they want lots of people to come speak on an item, and obviously, that's great. But if there's going to be 50 people there speaking on one item, and they all want to speak, like Sean said, they're going to probably get through the more technical and quick stuff, and they might bump, like, a bigger, speed cameras comes to mind, like a bigger or more controversial issue, bump it to the end so that the practical business of the meeting can be completed first, so.
And, you know, in that example, you know, if you're in communication with the staff, they should be able to tell you, I know in my experience I did, "I know the meeting starts at 2:00, but we're probably not going to get to your item till like 2:20 the earliest. So if you're on a time constraint, don't come into, you know, have your folks come from, you know, plan to be there from 2:20 to 3:30." So, you know, I would add that, in that scenario, I would add that to a list of questions to ask. At what point do you estimate my item will be up for conversation that can help?
Yeah.
Respect everybody's time.
Yeah, you all have been getting to some of these questions.
Yeah. So I think we'll save kind of tips. One thing we did want to talk about was this question of how many people to invite to speak on your issue. Sometimes, if PPG and a partner has filed something, maybe we've done data or budget research on it, so we'll go and share that. Our partner organization, that's really the leader on that advocacy, will share their reasons, their background for that. And then maybe we'll have one or two folks that really represent that issue are affected by this decision. They'll be there, too. But I have certainly felt over the years, if we come in with more than four-ish people on an issue, the council members start to just feel it's taking too long. You can see that they're saying maybe some points are repeated, You can see that they're saying, maybe some points are repeated, and it starts to take up a big chunk of the meeting. I think if it is a very critical issue, then we can warn them, ask them. But my reading has kind of been, maybe four people is a good number that doesn't swamp the meeting, but where you can still get different representatives, different points being made on that issue. But I'd love to hear what you two think about, how many people is too many to come and bring on your issue?
I feel like four is a safe
Yeah.
number. It's, I think, having a smaller group of people who speak well, speak effectively, like, have, you know, some sort of personal connection to the issue, if that's, you know, warranted, and they speak to that. I think that's much more effective to tell that story and tell that narrative than to, like, have 30 people there who copy paste, say the same thing over and over again, because they've heard it once, and they might just zone out for the next 29 people. You just don't know. So I think keeping it tight and personal and succinct is effective.
Yeah, I would agree. Also, with the fact that this is not the only time that you can be heard by, by the council. So there's a number of issues that warrant every single person being heard, and you don't have to have everybody show up at 1 o'clock during the weekday, because that in itself, by its time and date, is a limiting factor. So if you're, if you're promote, if you're here to speak on an item that you know that there's 50 people that want to speak on it, you know, then I would say you want to make a request for an evening committee discussion at a time that is more accessible to, to everybody. When you can park, and you don't have to worry about competing with everybody that's working, and you don't have to pay for parking. So that happens, that's happened a number of times. I'm sure a number of you have maybe been to evening meetings. And it's a good alternative to having to conform to what the regular schedule that the council puts out for you.
And in fact, we do have a question about that, as far as best practices for requesting some kind of public hearing like that. And what would you all suggest? Because I know in the past, sometimes we have requested public hearings, and that doesn't happen. So I don't know if there's any best practices there, or if it's just really, you know, depends on the topic and who's being asked.
I think it just depends on the topic. It seems, I feel like if you have an advocate in the council member you're working with, if they understand the issue and they understand the story and they feel impassioned now about it, they're going to push even harder to make it accessible for people. So I feel like as long as you have a good relationship with the council member, you know, who is taking the lead, or maybe is the chair of that committee or something, then it's more likely to happen, but I think it's just ultimately at their discretion.
And then we have someone, Ms. Valerie, who's here, that we were hoping would come up next to Sean. We started before you arrived, so I apologize for that. But Valerie's a representative of the Western New York Youth Climate Council, and they have had a successful common council advocacy campaign in the last few years. So we thought, Valerie, that you could weigh in on a few of these questions as well. We did warn her. I'm not completely putting her on the spot. Do you want to just introduce for us, Valerie? What was the advocacy campaign that you all won?
Yeah, absolutely. So...
And that's not amplifying you. It's just for the recording, so you'll have to speak up anyway, but speak into it.
Thank you for letting me know. I'm unsure. Yeah, so, hi, everyone. I'm Valerie Juong Shee-Hur. I'm from the Western New York Youth Climate Council. Our resolution item was to declare a climate emergency in the city of Buffalo, which is a legal resolution that commits to acting on the climate emergency. So we kind of did this in two parts, and the whole campaign took a little over a year. It started in, I believe, August of 2019, and then we finished in October of 2020. So first, we collected community signatures, and we submitted that as a petition with our draft resolution. And then we resubmitted another item to the agenda in 2020 that was revised with our cosponsors, with our lead cosponsor, Noakowski. It was so long ago to me. I think because of pandemic, it kind of made my whole timeline just out the window. And we did speak on Zoom, so that was a little different, which made it a lot easier to speak more confidently, since we did have a script. But I believe we actually filed the petition signatures in person. Is that still an option?
To drop it off by the office?
Yeah, okay. So that is what we did, since we had a lot of physical signatures. I think tips would be, yeah, just try to space out your points between people. I believe we had three to four people. We had a lot more people in the YCC, but not everyone was willing to skip school to attend the meeting. And it was nice that we spaced out those points, you know, so they don't zone out if you're saying the same thing. And yeah, just, I think, getting a mix of personalities to speak kind of keeps them more engaged. I had, like, a dynamic duo thing going on with one of the organizers at the time. They were very bubbly and very sweet, and I was a little more serious and cool toned. And, you know, that kind of, I guess, shock between the two of us kind of keeps people engaged. So just considering that sort of social aspect of it can be helpful as well.
We call that good cop, bad cop.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I kind of remember that conversation, because I was working for Noakowski at the time, and I remember it being, like, mostly positive. Like, it wasn't accusatory in the sense of, like, "You aren't doing enough," or "This isn't happening fast enough," or, you know, I remember just being like, "We need to collectively do something about this." And it seemed like buy-in was created because it felt like the office could partner with the organization instead of be on defense, I guess.
Thank you. I'm so glad you remembered us.
And so I'm curious, Valerie, was that an intentional strategy of the Youth Climate Council to say, "This is something we can all come together and do," rather than to say, "You haven't done enough"? Where have you been on this issue?
100%. I think it's also somewhat related to identity politics. I know that youth are considered to be pushing the ticket, but there is a lot of bad rep around youth in terms of, like, those talking of big talk and not really, you know, settling down to work, which is why we definitely pushed a proactive collaborative approach in how we spoke. And I'm so glad that reflected in your impressions of life, really. I'm going to be pleased to know that that did play a positive role in our campaign as we had intended.
And since you were one of the core organizers, and you were preparing not only other speakers, but young people who perhaps had never spoken in a public meeting before, any tips around how to do that? Like, did you, how did you help get some of those young advocates more comfortable? As you said, it was on Zoom. I remember the Zoom public meeting days, too, where you could have the window here and all your talking points on the other side of your screen, and that does make it easier. But any other tips, thinking of partners that want to prep a few members of their campaign to go in and speak?
Absolutely. That's a really good question. So it's kind of funny, since all of us were pretty new to organizing, so we just rolled into it. We didn't really have as much of a plan, but it was interesting to see how the different personality fits grew into speaking. I've always been more introverted, more quiet. Sorry if you can't hear me in the back. I'm happy to talk to you after. But I think letting everyone craft their own style and then forming a collective narrative around that, so that you guys can all address different pieces in the narrative, in your own style, in a way that's really authentic. And again, coming back to more of that social point, you do need to connect with the council members at a certain level if you want that collaboration, if you want that buy-in. So just be as authentic as you can and find a way to make that all fit together for you guys.
And any other tips from Valerie, Sean, Becca, in general, of going in to speak to the council? Something that comes to mind for me is, you know, kind of emphasizing your, your own constituency. Who are you representing? Why does that matter for council members? Maybe you or some of your speakers, you can say which district you're in. I saw you at the block club meeting, you know, really emphasizing your ongoing connections to the council members. But any other tips?
Yeah. One of the efforts I was a part of was participatory budgeting, and that was a large, you know, public hearing specific to just one issue. And they had everybody, I think, held a sign that said what district they live in. So, you know, you're, you're further breaking down that barrier between them sitting on the floor and where you're sitting. I, I was there for the beginning of the, the youth climate action, and, and they were incredibly impressive. Certainly, we don't get a lot of people under the age of 30 coming into meetings very often, so there was a bit of a shock, like, "Why, why are you, you, you all here?"
And that, you were all, like, under 20 at that time, right? Mostly under 20, high school students.
I remember, I remember, because one of them was a, a child and a former professor of mine. It all connected. I think the, the important thing, too, is not so much from, like, the communication standpoint, but just from your own sanity standpoint, is you're just planting a seed. Like, there's very rare where you're coming in and speaking on a, on an important issue, and there's going to be an action that day. You're just starting the discussion in terms of what is a municipal solution? What could a potential municipal solution be here? One of the best, best examples I had was the, the changing of the name at Unity Island. So its previous, I, previous name was a derogatory term. And there was just one individual who came, actually came to a caucus meeting. Because caucus meetings, as Sarah said, is where there's more, it's a little bit more informal back and forth conversation. And so that person just showed up and said, you know, "I'd like to see the name of that island changed." And I think it was, like, within a matter of a few months that the name was changed. So it's, some things can just be from that initial conversation, and then finding a champion. There was a, found a champion in, in the council that agreed with that. And then, you know, going through the charter and seeing, "How do you change the name of city property?" And, you know, going, going through all those steps. And I think that from that, I know for me, I learned how to change names through that process. And then we ended up changing a few library names as well, which has been, you know, rewarding to, to see. So all I have to say is, don't feel like you're, you're, you're building all this, all this thing up here, and then maybe you get that, you know, no comment reaction, or, or just, you're just starting the, starting the process, and then you're going to be doing a lot more intimate things on the back.
And two very quick questions here, then we'll do our last section and then open it up for discussion. One thing I think that can happen to us and partners sometimes is we will see an interesting, very relevant item on a committee agenda, and we'll go hoping to speak to that item. It's not something that we filed, right? Maybe it's something that comes from a city commission, comes from a different partner that we're not working with, but it's an issue that we are working on and we want to go speak to it. And partners have certainly said, "I went in, I wanted to speak on this issue," and they never opened it up at all. So we wanted to really go through, how do you speak on an item that you didn't file?
It could just be as simple as just showing up. But I would probably reach out to the entity or person that filed that item. Maybe they're not here today, and they'd also, you could educate them on, "Did you contact council staff and who's going to be speaking?" But yeah, you know, you, if, we do have, for anybody who's been to a council meeting, I'm sure you've, if, once or twice, you've seen there's some usual suspects who attend every meeting, and I've seen them just get up and say, you know, "I was, I was here just to listen, but, you know, I want to say my two cents on this item." But I, you know, I would say, for the longevity of trying to get that, whatever that item may be done, you know, maybe building, building a relationship with the entity. If it's coming from, like, a committee, let's say, like, the police overs, whatever the, the new name of the, the Citizens Police Oversight Committee, those entities, those entities also have meetings. So maybe you're going to want to go to one of their meetings or ask, you know, "What, what are you guys working on, on that issue?"
And did you find in the research, Sarah, that it is actually a discretionary point? Like, say, one example that happened to us in February, the Buffalo Arts Commission, a commission of the city, submitted its annual funding recommendation letter to the finance committee, and a couple of our arts partners went, and the chair of the Buffalo Arts Commission spoke, and they were hoping to go up and add comments, but they, the council kind of moved on to the next item before our people got toward the microphone, right? So maybe that's a matter of giving the heads up. Also, we can go back, it's to this picture. I think also going and hovering by the two microphones, like, while that chair is speaking, works. I, when we were in a committee meeting recently, what Sean just described happened, some, someone who was there on a totally different issue, like, motioned, motioned to a council member that they obviously must know, and basically, ver, you know, mouthed in council, "Can I speak to this? Can I speak to this?" And the council member went, "Okay, come on down." So some of it is informal like that, and if you haven't been in there, it's very intimidating to go hover by these microphones if you point them out. But that's really what I've seen happen. You can go sit right behind it, sit next to it. If maybe someone's speaking on the other side, go sit right at the mic on the other opposite side and wait your turn. They'll get to see that you want to speak. But also, they can move on without opening it up.
Yeah, so I believe, when I was talking to council staff about this, that basically having anybody from the public speak in a committee meeting is discretionary on their part. Like, they don't have to allow the public to speak in these committees. So even, like, when you file an item and ask to speak, that's still discretion that they're using to allow you to speak, which I think they're happy to do, and I don't know that there are any circumstances I've heard of where they're like, "No, you can't speak on this."
Yeah, it's often just very beneficial to have that extra information. Yeah, so, not really good reason to say no.
Great. So we just wanted to go through that one, too, because that, in, quite even recently, as I said, has happened. And it's a deeply frustrating experience. If, we've had partners who take time off from day jobs. If they're working on this, volunteer, go down park, go in, and then boom, the item's over. So we'll definitely do our best to make sure council staff are alerted. But if you're there on your own as well, you can really do all of that kind of informal, "Hey, I'm here to do this."
Yeah, nobody's coming to, like, greet you, show you when you'll be up to speak. I tried to do that because I, I understood, you know, the hesitation or barriers, but I, yeah, I would, I would seek some, I would seek somebody out, let them know you're here for what, you know, what item. Or if you're, if you're, if you are just coming to speak on an item, hey, I want to, you know, speak on, whether you know where it is, you know, reading the agenda beforehand, so you know when the item is coming up, and letting, you know, one of the staff members know.
Yeah. If you go back to the picture, I was just going to say, like, here's where...
Where to find the staff members.
So like, usually, it's cut off, but staff will sometimes have, like, a computer, or like, they're marking things up, or they're running onto the floor to check on something with council president. Like, they're over here. So if you find them, you can say to them, too, you know, "I'm interested in speaking on XYZ." And then they can put the ball in motion.
And so it's okay during the meeting to walk over there and kind of whisper to them, "I'm here on this item." Yeah. And one thing I've noticed, at that meeting I gave the example of, actually, I had emailed council staff ahead and said, "We have partners that want to speak on this." And they said, "Great, send them in." And then the chair of that committee moved on really quickly. So I think sometimes that communication either hasn't happened or just gets lost in the shuffle of all the items. So this, like, reconfirming on the day and going and sitting by the mic can be really important.
Or something has changed. Like, there could be a, a private conversation that council members have that even council staff isn't involved in, and they have sort of not come to an agreement, because that'll be formally voted on, but they've sort of had a meeting of the minds, I guess I would say, and just don't know that someone's there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So don't presume if you have confirmed that you're going to get this beautiful invitation from the council member chairing. "I know we have two nonprofit people. Come down." That never happens. You got to really get in there. The last thing I think we can say for the end, we touched on this a little bit, but when to meet directly with council members versus when is it time to file an item and go in and speak publicly? Any quick thoughts on this, and we can return to this in our big closing discussion?
I just don't think it's an either or. I think people should always try to schedule a meeting. If they don't already have a relationship with their council member, like, just try to get in for a quick, like, 45 minutes introductory, because then everything you want to do in the future, you've, you already know each other, and you already have that relationship at least started, so that when you, you do want to file an item, it's smoother. So I don't think it's an either or.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. Certainly, try to, try to meet first, but I'm sure everybody has a different experience, depending on what neighborhood you live in. It may be very easy to meet with your council member, it may be very difficult to find them.
This is true.
So I think you try, and then you can certainly, at that time when you file it, and I would presume they act with some sort of surprise that, that this is being discussed, and you could certainly point out, "I tried..."
Yeah, have your receipts.
How many times, you know, phone calls and emails to schedule a meeting with you? But yeah, definitely, definitely try to, to, to meet with them.
Or if not the members, you know, their legislative aides. Yeah.
Great. All right. So after you speak, we'll have a lot of partners ask us, "Well, what happens after this?" Or "What do, what do we expect after this?" And sometimes partners will think, "Well, we had this conversation with the council in the committee meeting. Now they're going to vote on my item, right?" No, because basically, anything that we submit is going to be a non-actionable... No, because, uh, basically anything that we submit is going to be a non-actionable item. So any letter that's explaining, you know, what the issue is or a report that we send in um, or petitions asking the council members to do something. They, as far as to my understanding, they legally can't, you know, say, I approve whatever this is, because it's not, uh, it's not an item that they can actually do anything with. They would have to create their own item that they could then act on and potentially vote on in the future. So if I send a letter to the council saying, all of your contractors should be paid a living wage, which does happen now, thanks to advocacy a few years back. But if that wasn't happening and, um, we were asking the council members to do it, I would go in, speak on the item. Maybe a council member really agrees with that and then go in, meet with that person. You know, continue to kind of work on that conversation. They would eventually create their own, you know, ordinance amendment or something like that, submit that to the council and then it would go through this process and potentially be voted on, um, to enact. But anything that we submit unfortunately is not going to, you know, have that immediate action. Like Sean was saying, it's really just to start a conversation with the council members. And get them thinking about it and discussing it. Um, there are some things that residents could, uh, submit that would be actionable. So if I want to start a business and I need to submit a permit application or if I want to build something on a vacant lot, but it doesn't abide by the green code, I need to get a variance request. Then that request to the council is going to be actionable. They can vote on those things eventually, deny them or approve them, whatever the case is. Um, but for the most part, anything like advocacy related is going to be a non-actionable item. And then you really have to get the council member to file whatever the item is that would move that forward. Next, yeah, so what that means in terms of the, oh, yeah.
Because you did have about resolutions in there, but what is the difference between a revolution and a referendum?
Um, maybe Sean can answer, but maybe can we wait on that?
We're going to go through resolution versus law versus ordinance and just.
We don't get into referendum, but we can ask one of them to get into that. So as far as what this means, our items are generally received and filed or tabled. And I would say to me, generally it doesn't really matter so. I mean, receive and file just means that, yeah, they're putting it on the record, it's done. As long as I got a chance to speak on it with the advocates there, like that's what matters is they heard it. They can table it, so then it will continue to be on that committee's agenda until eventually they receive and file it. But to us, I mean, we can just submit a new item, so it doesn't matter a whole lot, I think, whether or not it's tabled. But in this case, you could see, this is from the summary of, um, the committee that happened where Andrea and the other advocate spoke about the, the funding line for the arts. And you can see that it was tabled because the council member said, oh, we want to continue to talk about this. But again, you can just resubmit an item. So it's not, you know, just submit a new item on that if you're interested. But as far as things that the council members could, if they have actionable items in front of them, then they might do one of these things. There are a few other things that they could do too, but the ones that you might be most interested in are approving and adoption, which is basically passing the item, but we'll talk about the differences between those two or denying it. Uh, this one's for you, right?
Yeah, so then, um, you know, we, we have been thinking too a lot about, you go in, as Sarah gave this example, this was just uh, two weeks ago, maybe we went in, we said, um, the city is not fulfilling its charter requirements on arts funding. And they said, oh, that's very important. We need more time to look into that table than that was really the whole discussion. So we did not in this case, but we could have come out after we did those remarks, after we filed that item and done a press conference outside city hall to say, we just spoke about this, the council said this is important, but we really need to see action on this. Getting more coverage for that message, maybe putting a bit more urgency in to move that forward. As we've said, we will now definitely have to circle back to the few council members that have expressed concern over this, that seem the most likely to drive it forward and go meet with them directly. Um, we can continue to loop residents or other arts organizations into that campaign, bringing more people in to speak the next time. And then at P B G, we're more and more in the practice of if we do speak in council, we post just really the transcript of the remarks that we've prepared. We post that on our website as a news item. Maybe we link that on our social media, so it'll say, Sarah Wooton testified in common counsel on affordable housing. Here's what she said. And then, you know, just sharing and sharing it more. So again, to the point that going in and speaking is not the end of what you're doing. It's really very much the beginning in most cases. Um, and you have a lot of other options to keep, uh, getting the word out to.
Great. So as far as the tools that the council members have to actually, um, you know, change policy in some way, they have these three things. Resolutions, ordinances and local laws. So we're going to go through what the differences between those are. So resolutions, uh, the council is taking some kind of action, but they are not changing the law. So a lot of times at P B G, we think of this like the council is making some kind of opinion essentially statement. But that's, there are other cases as well. But for example, the council making an opinion through a resolution might be uh, stating the council's support for the New York State Legislature to pass the Good Cause Bill, which would protect against unjust evictions. And this can matter to state elected officials, you know, what the Buffalo Common Council is saying. However, they're not in that case changing the law at the city level, they're just demonstrating their support. Or they can do things that do have a concrete action, but again, that don't change the law, like waiving city fees for a group that's going to be hosting exercise classes in the park where the city would normally charge fees, the council can say, we're going to waive it this time. So there are many things like that that they can do. Um, and we, yeah, we see them working with resolutions and, and passing those quite often. Ordinances are different in that they do change the law. So there are two sets of laws that govern the city of Buffalo, the city code and the city charter. And so ordinances change the city code. And because they're changing the law, they need to be reviewed by the mayor, which we'll talk about in a minute. But some examples of this, I believe Sean was involved in the, the chicken law.
I'm not that old.
Oh, okay, sorry. I was around for some of this, but not directly.
Yeah, so, uh, changing the law to allow people to have chickens in their backyard is an example of an ordinance change. Um, or requiring, this is something that happened quite recently, requiring that, um, vape, tobacco and I believe marijuana stores have a, uh, some kind of city permit. And so those would all require this ordinance change. Then last, we have local laws, which very similar to ordinances, they're changing the law, but instead of changing the city code, they're changing the city charter. Um, and so again, those also need to be reviewed by the mayor. And a couple of examples there would be Cariel's Law, which created a duty to intervene um, when B P D officers are witnessing unreasonable uses of force. And also every ten years when the city has to redistrict the, the district lines based on the census changes and other factors. Um, that I believe is also a charter change because the districts are outlined in the charter.
Yes, so for many years we heard especially just ordinance, local law, ordinance, local law, just flying around and no one really seemed to know the use of those. And even, I'll say, Sarah, it actually took a lot of back and forth, um, with council staff to really even clarify this. So we're delighted to have this clarified. Ordinance changes the code, local law changes the charter.
I think the simplest way, and it's oversimplifying, local laws are, if you're changing how, uh, government is, is, uh, structured. So you'll see like Cariel's Law is affecting how city, city employees, police officers can act. And redistricting is changing the, you know, the boundaries of the districts. And the ordinance is dealing with backyard chickens. And so if you want to have a backyard, if you want to have a chicken in your backyard on your own property, which is not a part, uh, a city-owned property, but the city still has oversight of that, similar with how stores operate. So you're, you're more likely going to be dealing with ordinances if it's something that affects like your person or your business, uh, and local laws are, are changing how government operates.
So this may look kind of overwhelming, but it's basically just what we've been talking about before as far as how an item moves through council. Um, so yeah, in this case, a council member is submitting the item to get on the agenda. They're introducing the item in the regular meeting. It's being sent to a certain committee. Then it's being discussed in the committee, then it may be tabled or it may be voted on to go back to the regular meeting. And then at the regular meeting, the council members, the full body can decide to move it on. So if it's an ordinance change or a resident, uh, resolution, whatever the case is. And then depending on what it is, it may or may not have to be reviewed by the mayor, which is the next question.
Just if you go back one, this step can happen like just several times. So like, let's say a council member, someone applied for a special use permit and then like the person just like didn't appear. But it's really important to them. So they would, they might table it and say, I don't know why they're not here today, let's table it until the next committee meeting. Let's give them another chance to speak on it and tell us why they need this special use permit. But, so that just might be over and over.
Right. And it can even go to the regular meeting to be voted on, but then be recommitted to the committee meeting because they decide there's more to discuss on it and then go back. So it's not necessarily linear.
It's really fun.
So as far as what the mayor needs to review versus not, um, some resolutions the mayor does not need to review. So, uh, for example, if the council wants to establish a public hearing on something, the council has the, the, um, authority to do that without the mayor's approval. Um, if the council wants to ask a department to do something, for instance, I think council member Noakowski has just, uh, sponsored a resolution asking the comptroller, the city's watchdog, to do an audit of um, all city staff who are currently unpaidly or paid, um, yeah. Yes, administratively. And so they can do that without the mayor's approval. And because they can do it without the mayor's approval, it's called adoption. Because they're just setting it in motion without it needing to go to the mayor. Versus other resolutions such as, um, changing internal department policy. Uh, like, yeah, if they want to change how the B P D officers are, their policy, that has to go to the mayor because the mayor oversees all departments in the city. Um, or if they're changing funding associated with a department, that would have to go to the mayor. And then of course, ordinances and local laws, because they're changing the law, they always need to go to the mayor. And because these things have to go to the mayor, the council is just approving them. They're not adopting them, just approving. Um, and maybe, is this a good time, sorry, real quick to referendum? I don't know how that fits into this, but to answer Joe's question.
Sure. So, uh, so, you know, resolution, as we just discussed, it's a it's a document, it's a, that, that is actionable by the legis- by a legislature. Whether it's city, it's common council, all the way up to Congress. Referendum is, is, is when something is put up to vote by the public. So if we wanted to, yeah, have term limits.
Would that be a petition signed or?
So it, yeah, there's, that, that's a whole nother hour and a half.
Which we can very well organize because a lot of partners.
General rule of thumb is if you're, if you are taking power away from an elected official, and which changing term limits would be that, then that has to go up for referendum.
So as far as things that do need to go to the mayor, um, this is sort of the timeline, uh, of what happens. So the mayor has ten days, once the council sends them the item that they have approved. The mayor can decide to also approve it, which would lead to adoption. The mayor can do nothing within those ten days, which would also lead to adoption. Or the mayor can veto whatever the council had put forward, which sends it back to the council and then the council has a few different options. Council response. If the mayor vetoes it, then it goes back to the council. They then have thirty days to do something with it. They could amend it and say, you know, although we know that the mayor would like these changes and then the mayor will be okay with passing it. So we'll amend it, send it back to the mayor. Um, or they can choose to override the veto. So normally with a vote of the council, it would require just a majority vote, five of the nine council members to vote to do something. But in this case, an override veto, it has to be two-thirds of the council members, so six of the nine. And if they're able to do that to pass something, then that would also lead to adoption despite the mayor not being interested in it. Um, so that, yeah, that's, that's all I have for now.